Tuesday, November 18, 3 o'clock PM. We'll have our invocation by Councilmember Joel Gerard, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Deborah Ross, please stand.
Please bow your head and join me in prayer. Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you for the honor to be here to serve constituents of this great city. Lord, I want to take a moment to talk about the fallen officer, Mark Brock, out of Sibley. Lord, I want you to be with his family, be with all his kids that he coached, and Lord, just know that Bossier City is thinking of him and his sacrifice for his city. Lord, I want to thank you for Thanksgiving. It's going to be here before we know it, and we all need to take a moment to really be thankful for what the Lord has given us, especially your son's death on the cross and his resurrection. Lord, I thank you and I love you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Chris Smith?
Here.
Mr. Cochran?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Cliff Smith?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Magier, absent. In accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. If a board member has a conflict of interest on any of the items included on this agenda, please disclose that conflict now.
All right. Ceremonial matters and recognition of guests, we've got lots of guests here today. Let's start with our BYL students who I see are here. If y'all could come to the podium and introduce yourself and what school you represent.
I told you, y'all thought I was kidding.
Hello, my name is Mallory Howard, I'm from Parkway High School.
I'm Trinity Ramey and I go to Parkway High School.
I'm Honor Ramirez and I'm from Parkway High School.
I'm Brady Parks and I'm from Airline High School.
I'm Shelby Lade and I'm also from Airline High School.
I'm Bethany Elson and I'm from Benton High School.
I'm Carter Sutton and I go to Airline High School.
I'm Madison Hines and I go to Parkway High School.
Well, welcome to the Bossier City Council. We hope you learned a lot here today. And then, I'd also like to welcome Ms. Sonya Bales and the Bossier Commission for Women and their mentee program.
We came in numbers, as you can see. My name is Sonya Bales, I am the Communications and Media Officer for Bossier Schools, and as Mr. Gerard just mentioned, it is the season of Thanksgiving, so we came before you to say thank you. We're here on behalf of the Commission for Women of Bossier City Mentoring Program, and our young ladies who you see behind me are all seniors from all of our Bossier Parish high schools, and they have enjoyed spending today learning all about city government. And we just want to first of all thank your PIO, Louis Johnson, for making it a very meaningful day for all of our ladies, and also your department heads for taking time to speak with our girls. And we also want to thank each of you, our city council members, and also the Honorable Mayor Tommy Chandler, for investing in our young ladies. Just to give you a little bit of a quick background, the city has funded the Commission for Women since 1986, and the mentoring program is what we consider to be the most important part of our Commission for Women. It gives these students the chance to be able to learn about the community that they live in, and also to be able to cultivate their leadership skills. So if I could just ask of to let each of our ladies just introduce themselves briefly, just as our BYL students did, and I'm going to go ahead and turn the mic over to them.
I'm Evelyn Farmer and I'm from Horton High School.
I'm Gigi Crum and I'm from Airline High School.
I'm Darby Stiles and I'm from Plain Dealing High School.
I'm Jagaya Baker Shepherd and I'm from Plain Dealing High School.
Hello, I'm Lisa Tucson, I go to Benton High.
Hi, my name is Kinesha Maxi, I'm from LR High School.
Hi, I'm Austin Croft and I go to Horton High.
I'm Amirian Manning and I attend Bossier High School.
My name is Destiny O'New and I go to Parkway High School.
We have a great group of ladies. We also have a number of our commissioners here today, if you want to just kind of raise your hands. And again, just wanted to be able to come by and say thank you again for a wonderful day, and just again for seeing the value in our program, investing in these ladies. Thank you.
Thank you. And council, a few weeks ago, Councilman Cliff Smith and I had an opportunity to speak to the BYL kids, kind of give them an overview of city government, and this morning I had an opportunity to meet with the mentee program and kind of give them an overview of what we do, so very, very happy to have them here. All right, next we have Greenville Environmental Trust Group on the curb McGee Woodtreating Facility for an update.
Thank you for having us here today. We so appreciate the opportunity to provide this update for the former Tronics Kermit McGee Woodtreating Facility. My name is Tasha Lewis and I'm the Program Director for the Multi-State Environmental Response Trust. The Multi-State Environmental Response Trust is responsible for owning, facilitating cleanup of these contaminated sites, including the site here in Bossier City. So the topics that I am going to cover today include a brief site overview, a progress to date with respect to the environmental actions performed at the site, and an update on redevelopment planning for the site. These same topics will be discussed tonight at a community meeting at Red River Baptist So the site consists of two parcels, a total of about 32 acres. These two parcels are referred to the main or east property and the west property, with Hamilton Road dividing the two parcels. Residential properties are located to the north and south of the site, and that includes two public housing areas, known as the Scott Dickerson Homes to the north, and on this image, that's the, let's see if this works, not quite so well, the area highlighted in pink, and also Cisco Homes to the south. Cleanup is regulated by the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality under their Risk Evaluation Corrective Action Program, also known as RECAP. So in terms of the site history, Kermit McGee operated this facility for nearly 60 years. They used creosote and fuel oils to preserve railroad ties. As part of that process, the creosote-laden wastewater was discharged to unlined ditches that flowed north onto the property that is now currently owned by the Housing Authority of Bossier City, or the Scott Dickerson Homes. Those homes were built in the 1960s prior to the environmental regulations. Creosote, benzene, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, or PAHs, are the contaminants of concern that we are interested in. The investigations performed over the past few years paved the way for several off-site cleanups, and there were, we've completed the first four phases of the cleanup between 2022 and 2024. Those areas included the Scott Dickerson Homes, the associated parking lot, Cisco Homes along Carver Street to the south, and also the Scott Street adjacent to the Scott Dickerson As part of the work that we do, and consistent with our commitment for transparency and meaningful community involvement, we implemented a significant community engagement program. This included hiring a community liaison to help us go door-to-door to canvas to provide information about the cleanup to the residents that live nearby the site. It also included a number of community meetings. We posted, we built message boards, and we really tried to share this information. We also have a website where we're able to provide access to the community to obtain information about where we're at with respect to the site cleanup. So it was through these community meetings that we learned from the residents of their concerns about historical flooding that may have taken those creosote-laden wastewater and spread those into the community. So as part of that work, we began performing some additional soil investigation. We sampled about 102 locations along Green Street, Carver Street, and up near Jean Street. And what we found were 26 of those sample locations exceeded those Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality's health-based levels. Also, as part of that work, we found that the ditch, this was a ditch we were not aware of that there was contamination, did in fact have impacted soils, and that ditch was located just north of Jean Street. So the focus of what we've been doing over the last few months, this summer, and we recently completed, was to remove the soils that were in that open ditch, along with some properties that were adjacent to the ditch. And so we excavated those soils and replaced it with backfill. And this is really what we've considered our fifth phase of cleanup. So these next series of slides, I'll show some images. The image on the lower left is the final completed area of the ditch, so originally an open channel ditch, which we then enclosed with reinforced concrete pipe. And we also, skip to this next slide, which is a little bigger. So here you can see that reinforced concrete pipe. The worker here is compacting the soils, and then really what this ditch looked like after we completed the work. So this is at final grade with topsoil and sod. An important note, for all five phases of the work that we completed, we removed about 27,000 tons of soil. That's around 1,200 truckloads of contaminated soil were shipped off to the landfill. There was a recent article that came out, and the reporter used 70 Boeing 70497s, the airplane, so a large quantity of soil was removed. So to move forward, one of the things that we've been doing is working with the community to envision a better future, because this site has been burdened with a legacy of environmental contamination. So as we've focused our off-site work and we've done the cleanup, now we're focusing back onsite, and so how can we change the past and look forward? So as part of that, we have hosted some redevelopment planning workshops, and through that, we've heard from the community members that their priorities are a grocery store, retail and shopping, a community center, recreational center, vocational center, primary care health facility, mental health rehabilitation facility, and community-based solar. So a wide, a number of priorities, but these are from those residents in that area. There are two areas of the site where we believe we can move forward with redevelopment more quickly, and that is the west property, which is six acres, and a portion of the main property closest to Hamilton, which is another six acres. To facilitate the redevelopment planning for that portion of the main property, we've prepared a work plan to do some additional sampling. One of the things that we've found is where Kermit McGee collected samples in the past, and maybe those were clean, some of the work that we've seen, is that when we go out and sample, we're finding areas that are still contaminated. So as part of this work, hopefully by spring we'll have those results. We'll continue discussions with potentially interested future owners. We've had discussions with Bossier City, the parish, and others. We continue to solicit input from potential purchasers, as well as the community. And one of the key things about when we are moving forward with a potential disposition, a sale or a donation, we do and can donate property, is that it does require the approval of our governmental beneficiaries, and we also seek fair market value where possible. And as I've mentioned, in some cases, we are able to donate the land where it benefits the community. Also, wanted to share very briefly a success story in East Helena, Montana. Here, we've helped the community develop a former Sarco smelter plant, and that plant, there was about 1,600 acres, where we've helped to facilitate the building of two schools, rodeo grounds, and the establishment of the Prickly Pear Parkway. And with that, if there are questions, we're happy to follow up with respect to some of the work we've done from a redevelopment perspective. I also want to invite everyone tonight to come out to the community meeting. As I mentioned, that is at Red River Missionary Baptist Church, and it's from 6:00 to 7:30 PM tonight. Thank you, and if there's any questions, I can take those or...
Counsel?
If you don't mind. Yes, sir.
Go back to what you said just a second ago, that y'all are still taking samples and you're still finding contaminated soil. Once y'all are completely done, and I say, you know, selling the land at fair market value and everything like that, once y'all sell that, construction starts over there, they start disturbing soil and start finding contaminated soil again, where does that liability fall?
So the goal through the sampling is to collect those additional samples, both at the surface and at depth, so we can have more certainty to prevent what you described. So in the event, if we donated the property and there was work that was completed and they found additional contamination, sale proceeds, or if it's donated, we have funds in the environmental cost account, the trust in that instance would be there to help support and to facilitate any additional cleanup.
Thank you.
Counsel, anybody else?
On those ditches that you all cleaned on Jean Street, you went to a certain area in your stop. Is there a reason why you didn't do the complete ditch?
Yeah, so the way that we determine where the contamination is, is through sampling. So in that case, that roughly 102 locations, we've gone out, we drill, we collect samples, and we use that information to determine how far we need to go. So in the case of the ditch, that western extent was bounded by sample results that were below those Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality health-based levels or standards.
I just find it strange that you don't do the complete ditch, because if it rained and water was in there, rain was in there, it would have spread through the entire ditch, wouldn't it? And the contamination would spread from one end of the ditch to the other ditch, you know, wherever it stopped at, that entire area would be contaminated.
So as part of the investigation, and how we determine where the contamination is, is through that sampling. And so the way we found the contamination in the first place, and that's a great distance from the site, was through that sampling. And so we went from the east side near the railroad tracks and worked our way west along that ditch, including sampling private property owners' properties, and it was through that process that we found the end of that contamination, and it is based on those results.
You said the railroad track. So you started from the railroad track behind the Dickerson project and came all the way down Jean Street?
Yes.
And stopped at the corner of Green Street?
Corner of Jean, yeah, so we followed the process that's established for starting where there's known sources, and then we collect those samples, compare them to those results, and we step out. And we step out until we find results that are below those standards. So once they're below those standards, no further action is required by the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel? I got one question, just to piggyback off Ms. Ross. During this whole re-sampling process, are y'all going to sample places that you didn't do remediation and verify that it is still below those levels?
Yeah, so as part of the work that, so when funds were received by the Multi-State Environmental Response Trust in and around 2015, it was at that time that we were able to start performing the sampling. And through that work that we did, we found that some of those results that Kermit McGee had put out there, that those results were not background. So Kermit McGee had indicated that no actions needed to be performed up at the Housing Authority. But because of the work that we did, those additional samples, we were able to identify where that contamination was. we were able to identify, you know, where that contamination was and move forward with the cleanup work. Then with input from the community, something that we did not know, we did not have that history from those residents about the contaminated stormwater running down Green Street or Scott Street. And because of those recollections, we then went back out and sampled along Green Street, along Scott Street where access was provided, along Jean Street. And that is what gave us that additional information. So certainly if there's ever a time where, say, the city was outperforming work, which is by the way, how the site was discovered in the 90s, back when the city was excavating along Shaver Street, that's where they found the contamination. So, you know, we do have processes in place that if something were like that to happen, then we would move forward with performing additional investigation. But with what we have right now, we believe we found most of what's there off-site, and we can start to move back onsite.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time today.
Absolutely. All right, counsel, we are going to, again, continue our poised voting, but we do have our electronic voting back. So for now, it may go out in the middle of the meeting, so... But we're going to do both going forward. So with that said, I need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gerard, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment on today's agenda? Counsel, does anybody have anything? All right, counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries.
All right, counsel, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 11, 2024, special council meeting, the October 14, 2025, finance committee meeting, the October 28, 2025, infrastructure meeting, and dispense with all of those readings. Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? That was a mouthful.
Sure.
Motion carries.
All right, public hearings and actions on unfinished business.
Adopting ordinance authorizing the sale of property identified as assessment number 148723 to Delta Airline LLC for $295,000 pursuant to Louisiana Revise Statute 33:4712. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Hammond's?
I guess it'd be for Ms. Nottingham. This was advertised, everything like that, in the Bossier Press Tribune?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're past our 15 days on that and...
Correct. Three advertisements, once per week for three weeks.
Okay, just making sure that we've done all that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nottingham. Is there any other comments from the council? All right, counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to expand and enlarge the existing industrial tax exemption program for select son. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend ordinance 107 of 2007 to reflect several necessary changes to stay in compliance with Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, LDEQ. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Adopting ordinance for public utilities to create a part-time wastewater plant operator for the Red River Treatment Plant. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Adopting ordinance declaring two fire trucks surplus to the needs of the Bossier City Fire Department and authorizing the sale of said vehicles. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance declaring lots eight, nine and 10, Nelly subdivision, surplus to the needs of the city of Bossier City. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, did we ever find out, is confirmed that these are the lots behind the levee, behind Chasing Aces, the old dump back there? Is that where these lots are?
They are, they're actually to the east of Chasing Aces.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a pretty small section where the city has several lots that we own, that others are privately owned. And this person is pursuing, purchasing all of those to then do a replat for one larger parcel to develop.
All right, I mean, I see, I know that's a pretty bad road going in there. Is he gonna, he's gonna do all the roadwork and infrastructure, utilities, everything going to it?
I believe it's West Second Street is the street that actually goes right to it. But yes, that is part of the reason for the appraisal value was it is lacking sewer and water services to there, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nottingham, counsel, anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending the existing management contract between the city of Bossier City and ASM Global LLC. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council?
One question, Mr. President. The, I was just wondering, what the, was the split of the $3, how did that get split versus the four and five? I don't know if you'll know, or Mr. Jackson?
I think that the entire $3 went to the city, if I'm not mistaken.
So we're gaining an extra one and they're gaining one.
Correct, and that ordinance is on new business.
Yeah, that's good, thank you, sir.
And I see that Tyler with the arenas here, thank you for being here. Anybody have any specific questions for him? No, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And Tyler, I forgot to ask, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay.
Motion carries.
All right, new business.
Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement to restore sewer service on Shed Road and install sewer manhole and gravity main on John Wesley Boulevard at a cost of $94,500 to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Counsel, is there any comment? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriating $13,119,119 from the Parkway Capital Projects Fund to pay off the 2015 LCDA bonds. Final reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, it might be good if Angela just gets up and explains one more time what this is going to do for the citizens of Bossier, if you don't mind.
Sure, let me get my notes real quick.
Sorry, had you unprepared.
Okay, so we had some unspent bond proceeds from the 2018 bond. So what we did was just reimburse some older projects with that and draw down the cash. So the principal we're paying off is $13,050,000. And the interest we're going to save is $4,920,306 over the remaining life of the bond, which would have went through 2040.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Williamson?
It was a savings of like $900,000 a year?
Yes, roughly $9,083,875 a year. And for the next two years, but the payments increased over time. So it would have been up to 1.4 million debt service payment for 2040. So it was only increasing every year.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson, Ms. Nottingham, for y'all's work on this. Councilman Gerard, Finance Committee, Mayor Chandler for supporting it. Everybody, this is good work, I think it's a big win for the city, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriating $250,000 from the 2025 Parkway Capital Budget to upgrade and enhance the city's network to improve reliability. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It popped up, I hit the wrong button.
Okay.
There it is.
And did anyone abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance allocating $421,752 from the Public Safety and Health Trust Fund to purchase tasers for the police department and city marshal. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute an agreement between the city of Bossier City and Axon Enterprise, Inc. for taser devices and training related to the Bossier City Marshal's Office. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute an amended agreement between the city of Bossier City and Axon Enterprise, Inc. for taser devices and training for the Bossier City Police Department. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend section 114-34 of the Code of Ordinances of Bossier City, Louisiana, to adjust fees for new water meters and tapping fees. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to approve change order 14 and 15 for the Walter Obigby Carriageway Phase Two project, closing out construction with J.B. James Construction LLC for an increase in the amount of $19,760.67. First reading.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Chris Smith. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, Mr. President.
Come on up, Mr. Thompson.
New council, mayor?
Mr. Thompson, just from reading this, this is... What is this?
So change order 14, I've got a few notes here, so forgive me, I'll read off of here. But change order 14 encompassed the project as-built quantities, not only for the carriageway, but for Citizens Bank Drive. And that's why this is so delayed. The Citizens Bank Drive project was change ordered into the carriageway project, and then in which the substantial completion, that wasn't until August. So we're past that lean period, and we gave them enough time to complete all their substantial, all their punch list items. But it also included several drainage improvements, some cover of the burial rail slot underneath the bridgeway. And then going over to change order 15, that is the change order that reconciled both projects in itself. So I know I just double spoke on that. But change order 14 was the increase of $91,000. And then we captured all of the quantities in change order 15 for a clean reconciliation, $71,000 deduction, so $19,000 total.
Okay, have we reconciled anything on the charges that we incurred on the piles that were driven, that were wrong, that had to be replaced on this project?
I'll have to verify that.
Okay, yeah, if you just wouldn't mind letting me know on that, where we're at on that, if we're going to get any money back or anything like that from their, I mean, should it be from their bond or from their general liability on that project? Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
And Mr. Thompson, is this going to close out Walter Obigby, so we'll be done?
This closes out the wonderful project. It was a...
Geez, I cannot, that's music to my ears.
Yeah, it was a great, great project to be a part of, very honored. The city got, you know, an incredible parkway that we've got nothing but compliments on. So from Benton to South Bossier to South Shreveport, it's really something to be proud of.
So is the road open now?
The... Yes, sir.
It is, the Citizens Bank Drive is open all the way, okay.
Ms. Ross, did you have something?
No, no, I was going to ask what you asked.
Oh, okay.
Is this it? That's the last phase.
Counsel, is there anything else for Mr. Thompson? All right, thank y'all for all your hard work. I know it's been a couple of years, so thank you. All right, is there anything else, counsel? If not, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance 76 of 2017. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? And Mr. Gerard, this is the...
He answered my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I mean, this has to do with the arena, and I know our general manager is here. I just want to, you know, commend you, Tyler, on the job that you're doing there. Every time I go by now, there's something new that is coming to the arena. And, you know, that's just music to my eyes every time that we see that, that we are getting more and more stuff there for the citizens and out-of-town people to come in here to enjoy the arena. So thank you for all of your, I know you've worked hard on that, so thank you.
Is it music to your eyes or music to your...
Yeah, it's not to my ears, because I'm seeing it. I know that's big words for you.
Trying to comprehend.
Counsel, anybody else have anything? No, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to set a formal city council approval process for Mayor Oriole appointments on boards, commissions and committees in which the city council must approve. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Hammond. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Okay, counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the donation to the town of Sibley some of the miscellaneous furniture that was declared surplus in ordinance number 122 of 2025. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council?
Yes, President, I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Ross.
On this surplus, do the citizens of Bossier know about the surplus that's being... How to go about getting it? What's kind of notification or where the city citizens know about the surplus that's being?
I believe, I believe, and Mr. Jacobs might can help me with this. Public notice of Ordinance One Twenty-Two of 2025 was published in the Bossier Press Tribune.
Correct, and once it's enacted with a second reading, then there's a publication period, I think it's, you gotta wait the ten days and then seven, then an extra seven, I think, for the publication requirements. So it is, I mean, it's noticed like every other ordinance, you know, that we...
Okay, that's the only place, it's just in the Bossier Press?
That's our official journal.
Okay, so I was gonna ask, can it not be put on the web? We have a Bossier City website, right? Can some of that information be shared on the website?
It can.
Because everybody doesn't get the Bossier Press. I mean, it's not a very popular paper. And I know that's the only paper, no insult to Bossier Press. I'm just saying, you know.
The Bossier Press is mainly legal notices.
Okay, and see, a lot of people don't realize that. So is there any way, whoever do the Bossier City website can add some information to that?
Well, I believe that this is surplus office equipment. I believe Ms. McGraw can correct me if I'm wrong, that is needed by the town of Sibley. To my understanding and to the best of my knowledge, it probably has, at best, you know, garage sale value. It's just not, you know, it's, you know, it's old, used office equipment. Now, I believe there's some better stuff, for lack of a better term, that's going to be declared surplus at a later date now. And that will be then auctioned off, you know, pursuant to law. And, you know, we can advertise that, if you wish, on the city website. We can have Mr. Louis Johnston do a, you know, some type of public notice in case anybody wants it.
Did we, Madam Clerk, did we already declare that other equipment surplus instead of auction date? Or have we not done that?
The stuff that's in the warehouse has been declared a surplus. And then the auction date, I believe, is December fourth. Now, the only question I have, Mr. Jacobs, is can it be placed on the website? A link to it since this town of Sibley is not taking it all. And so there's gonna be some left and it's gonna be auctioned off by the person that normally auctions for us.
Well, yeah, it's been declared surplus, so I don't see any problem with the remainder of the Sibley stuff, so to speak, being placed in with the other stuff that's already been declared surplus.
Right, I just didn't know if we could advertise it on our website.
If I can clarify, I think that everything that was surplus that was in the warehouse that was previously declared surplus is going to be auctioned. I think that there was a small portion of it that the town of Sibley had requested by letter to be able to receive some of that because they needed it. And so that was pulled out of what will be auctioned. Everything that's gonna be auctioned is gonna be advertised out through the auctioneer. And will be publicly available to the public, anybody has internet access. So I don't think there'd be a need to put it even on the city website other than if we want to put a general place where we say we're auctioning items, but...
Yes, I think so. I think that'd be a good thing to do. Again, everybody don't get Bossier Press. So I think it'd be good to have another place where you can search. I mean, and even the website need to be kinda have a facelift done to it and some items need to be put on there.
Well, that's in the works right now. I know that that's, that's in the works right now. But the auctioneers, they advertise it because they want to, you know, they're selling it. So they advertise it quite a bit, so it'll be out there.
Is the city of Bossier selling this stuff or is some other company is selling it?
It's a company doing it on behalf of the city. Once we've declared it surplus, then the auctioneer company takes it and sells it and makes a commission off of the sale. That way, it's a win-win. We get rid of old outdated equipment. They do it with vehicles, anything. It's, you know...
Do the city get any refund for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. But again, if you could, if it's possible, let's see, can we put it on the website?
Sure.
I think that'd be a great thing.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Counsel, is there anything else?
I have a brief.
Yeah.
I just wanted to commend Bossier City for being a leader. I think it's great that we help our fellow cities around us, Northwest Louisiana. We make it stronger. So when I saw this ordinance, I was very excited that we're kinda being a leader in that way. So good job, mayor and council.
They're very excited about getting, they were like, it's brand new to us.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Very good.
It's good.
Is there anything else, council?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just saying, one man's junk is another man's treasure.
It's a treasure, exactly.
All right, council, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the City of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for disposal according to law. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Approve a parade permit fee waiver for Independence Bowl Mardi Gras preview parade. First and final reading.
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Ross, second by Councilman Chris Smith. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution certifying off-system bridge program compliance for 2025 through 2026 for the City of Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Counsel, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Ms. Ross, did yours pop up?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm going ahead.
Motion carries.
Reports.
Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Financial Report.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended October thirty-first, 2025. Page one is revenue by fund. Revenue is nineteen percent over budget. The majority of the increase in general fund revenue is due to increased sales tax and utility tax revenue compared to prior year. The majority of the increase in sales tax capital fund revenue is due to an increase in sales tax compared to prior year and a transfer from the Equipment Replacement Fund to replace CNG vehicles. The majority of the increase in Parkway Capital Fund revenue is due to an increase in sales tax compared to prior year and a transfer from the 2018 LCDA Bond Fund to reimburse capital projects. The majority of the increase in EMS fund revenue is due to an increase in EMS billing compared to prior year. The majority of the increase in sales tax fund revenue is due to two point one million in online collections for October 2024 that were delayed and received after month end. If these payments are included, the increase is one point three million or eight point eight percent, not the twenty-five point eight percent. Page two is expenses by fund. Expenses are seven percent under budget. Expenses increased due to a third payroll occurring in October 2025 compared to two payrolls in October 2024. General fund expenses also increased due to two sport-tran invoices paid in October 2025 and one invoice paid in October 2024. The Public Service and Sanitation Fund also had increases in street sweeping and grass-cutting mowing services expense compared to prior year. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up twenty-eight percent, twenty-five point eight percent compared to October 2024. Approximately nine hundred and fifty-one thousand is due to the delayed online payments from prior year. If these payments are included in prior year, there's an increase of two hundred and four thousand or three point eight percent. Page four is the manning report. Full-time employees are eleven more than last month and twenty under budget. Part-time employees are two less than last month and thirteen under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for October 2025 has decreased twenty-one percent compared to prior year. Current year-to-date income is sixteen percent less than prior year and is eleven percent over budget. On a rolling twelve-month basis, net operating income is down twenty-six percent. Are there any questions?
Counsel, does anyone have anything for Ms. Williamson? Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Andy, Mostly Project Report.
Badginal.
Badginal. Chris has that, I don't.
We're gonna get it one day.
Afternoon, council. Mayor. Okay, jumping right in. General overview, we have over twenty-eight million in ongoing design and construction, three of which, three of which are in construction valued at five point four million. Eight valued in design valued at ten point seven million. We also have seven private developments ongoing valued at around two point nine million. And eight, eight grant projects valued at nine point six. Here's an update on Citizens Bank Drive. As Todd said, this one is complete. So you won't be seeing that on the next update. Lateral B1, this is a little behind schedule. We've got a percent complete of forty percent with fifty-nine percent time elapsed. They are making great progress, though. They've refined some of their processes and they've sped up their construction.
Hey, Andy, I haven't been interrupt you. While they're mobilized on this lateral B1 improvements, did y'all look into going on down?
Yes, sir.
And doing that other, other portion?
Yes, sir, I've got it written down here that there's gonna be a change order.
Okay.
You'll see that come up. They've got specialized equipment and the manpower to do it, so you'll see that.
Okay.
Here's a few photos of some of the private developments that we have going on. Things are running pretty smoothly on that part. Okay, so projects in design. Some of the highlights here is the Bardot Lane Montgomery Lane Drainage Project. That's ninety-five percent complete. We're looking at using a new type of technology, pretty excited about. So that one is moving forward. The Fire Department Maintenance Facility and the City Council Chamber renovations, those are starting in construction here pretty soon. I think we moved up the date on the demo on the city council chambers. Twenty twenty-five citywide street improvements, I'm going ahead and moving forward with that. It's a little late in the year, but we're gonna get those plans finalized and then we're just gonna roll straight into twenty twenty-six and get those done early. Some of the grant efforts we've been working on is the, to highlight is the Louisiana Watershed Initiative Grant Projects. Those are moving ahead, maybe not as fast as it should, but we are making progress. The Transportation Alternative Grant Project, that is the sidewalks on North Gate. We have around a sixty percent plan complete. Forgive me, I didn't update that. And also the Anita Ditch Detention Improvements actively in design. And that's all I have for y'all. You have any questions for me?
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I have one. The sidewalk on North Gate, how far are we going north with that?
That is from Old Minden to the apartments just before North Gate entrance.
Both sides?
Yes, for the most part.
Awesome. Makes some happy people over there.
And then the intersection at Patricia is getting all-new crosswalks and ADA compliance in.
Nice, excellent, good. Counsel, anything else? Ms. Nottingham is sneaking in.
I just wanted to add, we have a new feature on our website. If you go to the departments, you'll see Mapping and Geographic Services. The public map portal has a construction tracker. And so you can go and see updated photos and it's got a list of all of the projects too. So our GIS...
Can you pull that up, Ms. McGraw?
Where's that?
From the homepage.
Can you pull up Amazon after that?
Where's it add-on here?
If you go to Departments and it says Map, Bossier City Services.
Yeah, sorry.
It's right there, you see it?
Yeah, see?
Well, that is pretty cool.
Yeah, so you can click on Explore, any of those projects, and then it will show you where it is. And it will give you additional information, has current photographs as they've done inspections and things like that. So our SAM driver, our GIS coordinator, has done a phenomenal job in creating access for citizens and putting all this information out there publicly for them to find.
That's great.
Before you walk away, can I put you on the spot with a couple of quick questions?
Okay.
Where are we at on both the citywide marketing effort, website upgrades and all of that? And then where are we at on the I-20 exit ramps? Are we getting closer to getting some of that?
Yes, we are going to execute the agreements for the marketing. And then we have had discussions about the website refresh. We have a preliminary website refresh that we're finalizing. But we have also had conversations with the marketing firm about that. And then we are trying to get some branding and let the marketing get a little bit of that done that we can incorporate into the exit ramps. But we do have some, some ideas and kinda general designs and elements that we definitely would like to see included in those. So we are definitely moving forward.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I got a couple announcements real quick. Just wanna remind everybody, one, Thanksgiving is next week, so this is the last time we will meet before that, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We will be back in these chambers on December second and December sixteenth. And then that will be our last meeting in here. We will be meeting at the City Courthouse on premise, just on the other side of the building for the foreseeable future. We will... I don't know where I was going with that, but anyway. Yeah, it's still gonna be live streamed and all of that, but it's gonna be, you know, growing pains for a couple of months while we're over there. It's not gonna be as convenient as being in this room. This Saturday, the City Council, the Parks and Recs Department Administration, we've all worked together to put together a family fun night with the helps of bikes, et cetera. We're gonna be watching a movie, the greatest turkey movie of all time, Free Bird. So at Walker Place Park and then, and a bike ride. So I think the bike ride starts at four o'clock. Mr. Cochran is gonna be leading us on that. And then the movie starts at five-thirty at Walker Place Park. There's gonna be food trucks and things like that. So we invite everybody to come, have a good time and enjoy the holiday season with us.
Chris, tell everybody where Walker Place, just people, that it's next to Brookshire Grocery.
Yeah, right next to the Brookshire Grocery Arena. And then on the topic, I know where I was going with, when I paused on the council chambers. Meetings are gonna remain on Tuesdays at three o'clock. Because we're using the courtroom, we're gonna be very limited on special meetings or even committee meetings. gonna be very limited on special meetings or even committee meetings. So, pretty much gonna be sticking straight to just council meetings for now, just because we don't have the availability. So with that said, I would just ask the administration, since we're not gonna have committee meetings, if there's anything that's important that you would get with the committee chairman, and then they can maybe help relay, I think that would make things a lot easier for us. So, Mr. Gerard with finance, Mr. Hammond with infrastructure, and Mr. Cochran with community needs. So, that'll make things real easy for us. All right, that's all I got. Anybody else have anything? Mayor Chandler?
Yeah, like, I'm gonna kinda repeat what you said, you know, like, next week being Thanksgiving, I wanna wish all the employees of Bossier City and all the citizens of Bossier City a happy Thanksgiving. And, and one thing I'm happy to do is work with y'all each and every day, and all the employees of Bossier City, and I'm happy to live in the great city of Bossier City.
Thank you, Mayor Chandler. Counsel, anything else? All right, if that's it.